Hi. I would like to call to order the regular board meeting scheduled for today, November 14th, 2023, 5 o'clock. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as published?
So moved.
Okay. First my time, second my mic. All in favor? And do I have a motion to go into executive session for personnel?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, great. Thank you.[44.14][44.14](laughter) Good evening. Good evening. Do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve Personnel B. 1 through 4 and C. 1 through 8?
So moved.
Okay. First my time, second my mic. All in favor? Thank you. We want to welcome you to the regular board meeting today, November 14th. Darla and Wes are out of town, so you have Mike, Tom, and me. Please let's stand for a moment of reflection and the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. The first item is IGA facility use agreement with Matt Work. Welcome Sheriff Freeman. Welcome.
I'm excited to be here to ask Dr. Bearden for a recommendation to approve Forsyth County Schools to enter into an intergovernmental facility agreement with Forsyth County Board of Commissioners and specifically Forsyth County Sheriff's Office for our current Midway Elementary School, which is located on 9.85 acres at 4805 Atlanta Highway, once it's decommissioned as a school. As many of you know, we're building a larger Midway Elementary School just down the road on Mullinax, and that will open next fall of '24. We want to thank the Forsyth County voters for approving that in our previous SFOs so that we can build that newer facility, and now we get to enter into a great agreement with our Sheriff's Department. Forsyth County Schools views this partnership as a win-win for both us and our community. Having a law enforcement presence at this location is very beneficial to our community and very welcoming having schools less than a quarter mile down the road. This will be the second partnership that we have with the Sheriff's Department. The first one is at South Forsyth High School, which we have been very thankful to have them on our campus. We also have many other IGAs for sporting athletic facilities with the county as well. So with that, I want to turn it over to Sheriff Freeman to introduce him, his staff, and what their plan is for that facility.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. So Superintendent, Members of Board, thank you for having us. So I have with me today Captain Rob Haggerty, my Director of Training, and my Chief Deputy, Joe Perkins, who runs the day-to-day operations of the Sheriff's Office. Look, as we all know, we're all busting at the seams, and Forsyth County is still growing. And so recently, about a year and a half ago, we opened our own police academy. I know Dr. Bearden has some background and family with that, and we're the only sheriff's office in the state of Georgia that has their own academy. And the great part is that is a partnership with the University of North Georgia. So I know you have partnerships with UNG, and it's just a continuation of that. But that created a need for us, and we're training law enforcement officers from all over, from the metro area to all the way to White County, to Hall County, to Gainesville, to Swanee, and we're teaching it in advance. They're getting 70% additional training than the state of Georgia offers traditional law enforcement training for new officers. So we took that on, as well as training the 505 members of the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. And what we found ourselves in is a rented building that is woefully underspaced within the first year of going, once we opened the academy. So that gave an opportunity. We had inquired when New Midway was gonna be decommissioned, if you will, and that led to a conversation with Dr. Bearden and I. It is a great opportunity to relocate our police academy and our training division within that. It will put literally dozens upon dozens of additional deputy sheriffs and other law enforcement officers in that corridor of South Forsyth, right? So that gets us close to Post Road, that gets us close to Denmark, that gets us close to quite a few, as Matt said, quite a few of our schools, on top of the SROs that are already at the school. So we see it as a win-win. The agreement, and I'm sure members of the board may have seen this already, but the agreement says we're responsible for the school. We're responsible to take care of the maintenance, the power, the water, the infrastructure, those kind of things. It is just simply an agreement to allow us to use that with an out for either one of us down the road. The Board of Education retains ownership of it. It just allows us to use it specifically as a training facility for the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, the only other thing I would add, it's a 15-year agreement. We've been talking for a couple of years what we would do with the current Midway Elementary School once it was decommissioned, and when Sheriff Freeman and I had that conversation, we decided it was the right thing to do for our community as well. It's certainly a need for the Sheriff's Department. We own the facility. That lease, just for the public knows, it'll cost the Sheriff's Department $1 a year for 15 years, so I think they can handle that.
I tried to negotiate that down. He was unwieldy.
No way.
Yeah, but it really is a win-win situation. I just want to say with Sheriff Freeman here and much of his command staff, once again, I've said this many times, our partnership with the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office is second to none. We are so fortunate and so blessed to live in a community that really does value the partnership between both entities, and Sheriff Freeman and his team provide great support on a day-to-day basis for Forsyth County Schools, and we are very appreciative, and we're excited about this partnership.
And I will add, just for the members of the board to know and publicly to state, a couple of years from now, I would have had to ask for a training facility built probably at our farm facility out on Old Federal Road, our farm's training facility. That would have cost county taxpayers, whether it was through SFOs or whatever funding mechanism, millions of dollars. We've now been able to kick that down the road for a considerable period of time upon agreement between the governing entities. So we actually are saving taxpayers a significant amount of money by doing this. So thank you.
With that, I'd recommend approval of IGA facility use agreement with the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second, and discussion?
Yeah, this was a culmination of a lot of work because Midway, redoing Midway for a long, long time, has been on the agenda. We've had to look at it, highway 9's encroached upon it, it couldn't function as a school anymore. We needed to do something. So this is, when they brought this to us, I mean, I spend one night a week usually up at the training center now, and it's woefully under-created for what it does. It does a great job, but it's not enough. And so this is gonna allow us to be a lot more than we are, and we are the best. So we'll just wait and see what this turns into, and I'm excited about it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, when the Sheriff and Dr. Bearden came to the board with this idea, I mean, it was probably the easiest yes we've ever achieved. I 100% support deepening our connection to the Sheriff's Office, and I'm so grateful for all 56 of your SROs that are looking over our kids every single day. I've got three of mine under your care every day. So whatever we can do to deepen that connection and keep our kids safe, it's a no-brainer for us.
It's our priority.
I'm glad that we can make this come to pass.
Thank you.
And I'm glad we get this moment to kind of just offer gratitude for you all for being here. I know it's not on here because we are talking about the facility, but the SROs and just your presence around the community is felt, and so thank you very much. So all in favor? Okay. You can handle it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bearden.
And Tom and Darla are not here tonight, but they were both fully in support of this as well.[549.00][549.00](applause)
That's okay. And next, we have Sarah Taylor for recognitions.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Taylor, Associate Superintendent, Student Services, and it is my honor tonight to do our special recognitions. And we kind of strong-arm somebody just really quickly, but what I want to do is Mashburn Elementary, Steve Miller is here tonight as our principal, but I want to ask one of their parents, Lindsay Henderson, to make her and her daughter join me up here really Lindsay's gonna share a little story for you guys about Blair Morris and what this honor is about.[601.16][601.16](laughter) Surprise![603.16][603.16](laughter) Okay. Public speaking is not my thing. I'm a little bit nervous, but if it were not for such a deserving woman, I could not be here right now. This is my daughter Addison. She is in fifth grade at Mashburn Elementary School. She will be 11 next Monday.[624.79][624.79](laughter) And Addison was diagnosed with dyslexia in first grade. When she was in first grade, she was struggling to read some of her Power Words. Ms. Morris stumbled across her one day in the hallway. Ms. Morris has always been a fifth-grade teacher. She has never taught Addison, so she had no obligation to my daughter at all, and she motivated her and sent home letters every, well, I don't know how often it was, but she would draw little unicorns, words of encouragement, and put candy on it. If you can learn two or three more Power Words this week, I'll give you this, and just incentivized her. And I thought that that was really amazing because, again, no obligation to my daughter at all, and you know that ever since then, we have held you at the highest, and we love you so much. You are so deserving of this, and Addison and I are so honored to have you as her teacher this year. We are just, we love you.[689.11][689.11](applause) Congratulations. We're gonna have you on our show. Thanks. I love you. There's one chicken.[695.11][695.11](laughter) We also have Senator Steele with us that just walked in. Thank you, Sean. Come on up. And we're gonna give the resolution.
I will. Sorry for walking in late. So this is an official Georgia State Senate resolution signed by me, your new senator from District 48, and then some other guy, District 27, Greg Dollsall, Phil Everman.[752.32][752.32](laughter) A resolution commending Mrs. Blair Morris and for other purposes. Whereas Mrs. Blair Morris has served as a teacher at Mashburn Elementary School in Forsyth County, she has truly exceeded as a fifth-grade teacher and shown true dedication to her job, students, and those in the Mashburn Elementary community. And whereas in 2014, Mrs. Morris became a certified gifted math teacher. She earned her gifted endorsement in Master's degree and is currently working on her coaching certification. And whereas Mrs. Morris has gone outside the bounds of her own obligations to nurture and care for the education of all students. She has spent time and effort helping kids with sight words and reading, particularly investing energy into learning during the COVID-19 pandemic and online school. And whereas she has shown great effort and attention to students at Mashburn Elementary, providing intentional and consistent support, earning her Mashburn's MVP of the Week twice. And whereas Mrs. Morris goes above and beyond to make sure her students get what they need. She makes sure she always pushes them to be their best and teaches in a way that they have no doubt she loves them. She is a great supporter of her teaching team and will drop whatever she's doing to help a team member out. Now therefore, let it be resolved that Mrs. Blair Morris is heartily commended for her many wonderful years of service to the youth of this state and extend sincere best wishes for continued success.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.[833.11][833.11](applause)
I'm a hugger.[835.11][835.11](laughter)
Hang in the bathroom, it'll keep you healthy.[841.11][841.11](laughter)
So I wanted to say one more thing. I forgot my story because I was so nervous. When Addison was in first grade during COVID, that was the year that the kids were online. Blair texted me one day and asked if she could come over. She had a few things for Addison, and she brought sidewalk chalk over to her house and sat outside. She brought her daughter Emma Ma and worked on Addison's sight words with her in the driveway. And that was really where my heart melted, but I think I forgot to mention that.[871.00][871.00](applause) Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank y'all. Thank you so much. And if you're here from Blair School for Mashburn Elementary or family members, please stand up if you're here to support Blair.[881.11][881.11](applause) I love you all. I love you. Thank y'all so much. I got it.[886.11][886.11](laughter) All right. Well, we'll move on to our next special recognition. This person I've had the joy and pleasure with working for over 20 years, but our principal from Hendrix Middle School, Cheryl Riddle, recently was awarded the Georgia Association Middle School Principal, Jerry Davis Distinguished Principal Award. So Cheryl, I know she's in here because I've seen her chasing kids.[916.32][916.32](applause) And if you're here to support Cheryl, if you're from Hendrix Middle or her family member, please stand up. (applause) Okay, our next special recognition, and I actually was at Denmark about two weeks ago, so I actually got to see them when they came back from the school from Indianapolis. But we actually have the veterinarian science team was recognized being the 2023 National Championship. So I want to go ahead and get those team members and their sponsors to come on up. I had the opportunity.[956.82][956.82](applause) When I was at Denmark two weeks ago, I actually got to go into their classroom and along with their four dogs that they had in there.[973.13][973.13](laughter) But was able to talk to some of the team members and tell me more about the competition. And it's very, I mean, there's a lot of question, textbook stuff at the very end. What makes the difference between a team coming in first place and second place really is the demonstration and all the activities they had to do to demo. So I'm super proud of them. So as I call your name, maybe walk across and say congratulations to our board members. Madden Callis.[1010.13][1010.13](applause) Congratulations. Mackenzie Cracks.[1013.13][1013.13](applause) Mackenzie Powder.[1015.13][1015.13](applause) Emma Weisenmaker.[1017.13][1017.13](applause) And then who sponsors our team is Donovan Hemmings.[1029.13][1029.13](applause) Congratulations. Jessica Kurtz.[1032.13][1032.13](applause) And Shelley Williams.[1034.13][1034.13](applause) So our next special recognition, which is actually sponsored by Jim and Nick's, and we really appreciate them doing that each month, but our employee of the month also comes from Denmark High School. So Kelly Russo was hired in 2018 at River Watchville School as the data clerk, but then she transferred to Denmark in 2022 as a counselor and athletics secretary. So I want to ask Kelly to come down here while I read a couple of things about you, Kelly.[1071.58][1071.58](applause) It's three pages long. I won't read all three pages, but I will give it to Kelly so she can enjoy it later. So I do want to read a couple of them, though. Kelly fills so many shoes at our school. She is constantly going above and beyond for our students and staff. She is a creative problem solver and a solution creator. She never says no or will do anything in her power to come up with a solution. Without her in the office, one, it would be a mess; two, we would be treading water. We could not do our jobs without her kindness and efficiency. So the next one, Kelly goes above and beyond, sorry, for her duties and so many more. I don't know how the school functions without her. Is definitely not at an operation level it is now. She runs the textbooks operation, makes our lives and everyone, she helps so much smoother. She engages with every single person in the building and is always willing to contribute in any way possible. That means helping out with coworkers or students. Kelly is engaged in counseling and athletics. She knows the staff and the students very well and an absolutely tireless worker. She truly cares about the students and adults in the building and community. I am grateful that she's helped with our administrators and coaching and counseling building. They would all say that Kelly is most deserving of this recognition. The running joke is at the athletic department is that Kelly is the athletic director.[1167.33][1167.33](laughter) And I'm just here to support her. So Kelly is always looking for ways to do things for efficiency. Comes back home better than what we have already doing in our department, and she's very successful in this capacity. It is pretty difficult to put in words the impact that Kelly has done in our school in the one and a half years that she has been here at Denmark, but it seems that she has been here since it opened six years ago. I consider myself a hard worker and put in the hours, but Kelly will match and exceed my work outpost most days. And last but not least, I feel that Kelly should be honored because she works behind the scenes and does not go around looking for attention. She is very humble and deserving.[1216.15][1216.15](applause) Thank you. I love you. I love you. Denmark's dominating. Can everybody from Denmark High School please stand up to recognize both your veterinarian team and Kelly?[1229.33][1229.33](applause) I think that's half our room, right?[1231.33][1231.33](laughter) So next, we are moving on to our superior spotlight. I'm gonna ask Amy Brooks to come up from Little Mill Middle School, our Assistant Principal, to give our spotlight tonight.
Good evening, and thank you so much for this opportunity to share with you something of which we are very proud at Little Mill Middle School. My name is Amy Brooks, and I am one of the Assistant Principals at Little Mill. I would like to begin by offering my apologies for Ms. McCrary's absence. We have been excited to share with you all about some of the special things happening at our school, but unfortunately this evening, Ms. McCrary is feeling under the weather and is unable to attend. Our journey with restorative practices began during the 2018-2019 school year. We began to notice that students were struggling with regulating their emotions and managing their behavior. So in response to seeing those needs, we started trying to find tools or ideas that would benefit our students. We also wanted to equip teachers with the skills to effectively help and support our students and their needs. Little Mill has always been a school that believes in the importance of building relationships, but we needed more. We needed to help our students learn how to navigate difficult situations and learn important coping skills. We began to hear about restorative practices. The learning started rather slowly, and to be honest, I was a little skeptical at first. The learning continued, and we realized that the philosophy behind restorative practices really aligned very closely with the vision and mission of Little Mill. Being intricately involved in the work of restorative practices since 2019, I am honored to be able to talk to you today about the impact it has had on the students and staff at Little Mill Middle School. I am not skeptical anymore. These practices have allowed the students and staff at our school to build deep connections and learn how to positively interact with people in our community. Restorative practices focuses on the five Rs: relationships, respect, responsibility, restoration, and reintegration. People have an innate need to connect, and we have seen this need increase in the most recent years. Restorative practices provides us with structures and guidance on how to build, connect, and deepen the relationships in our building. The mindset of these practices places value on individuals and allows people to grow and learn together, even learning how to overcome challenges and conflict. In your folders, it looks like this, there is a document titled "Restorative Practices Overview." You can see that there are several types of restorative practices. Most people know community-building circles as the main piece of these practices, however, there are many more. In addition to the community-building circles and restorative circles, the practices include methods of communication such as affirmative statements. The other day, I heard a teacher walking with her class in the hallway. The teacher said, "I appreciate the way you're walking quietly and meeting expectations." Likewise, I heard another teacher comment to a student, "I feel frustrated when you call out in class because it disrupts the lesson, and I noticed that other students become distracted." The communication tools involved with restorative practices help us communicate with the people in our community in a way that brings about conversation and understanding of perspective, empathy, and awareness of the impact of one's actions. Developmentally speaking, empathy and self-awareness usually develop when students are high school age. They are not typical to students in middle school. At Little Mill, we feel it is important to take opportunities to help teach these important skills. We have learned that change happens in conversation. Restorative practices help us navigate honest and sometimes difficult conversations in an effort to teach our students and staff how to be a connected community member and build positive relationships. Each Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, our students participate in community-building circles during homeroom time, which we call Explore and Discover. Paired with these circles are lessons designed to focus and teach our students how to dream, strive, achieve, and celebrate. Several years ago, the leadership team at Little Mill developed I-Will Statements to give our students the strategies and skills needed to dream, strive, achieve, and celebrate. These statements are in your folder as well. It was and continues to be our goal to provide our students with the understanding of the strategies needed to make this vision a reality. The community-building circles help build a deep connection between our students and staff. Recently, one of our students moved to another county. He told his teacher that what he was going to miss most about Little Mill was his Explore and Discover class and the time they had spent talking in the circles. Restorative practices requires a high level of support in balance with a high level of accountability. These must be balanced. This mindset brought about the next document in your folders titled "Restorative Intervention Guide." Because of the structures of restorative practices, when conflict occurs, we can have conversations that naturally bring a high level of accountability, and through the conversation, we are able to restore connection and help the people involved in the situation move forward with mutual respect. We recognize the importance of conversation, and the intervention guide allows our teachers to consistently use opportunities for accountability in conjunction with important conversations. Through restorative practices, we are able to help students and staff see each other's perspective, build empathy, and discover that we have more in common than we may realize. I have had the privilege of facilitating many community-building circles and restorative conversations. I have been humbled by the ability of our young students to discuss difficult topics and find ways to understand one another and move past conflict. I have been part of conversations where students were able to express hurt that came from insensitive and inappropriate comments, impulsive actions, and misunderstandings. I have heard students say things such as... Restorative practices requires a high level of support in balance with a high level of accountability. These must be balanced. This mindset brought about the next document in your folders titled Restorative Intervention Guide. Because of the structures of restorative practices, when conflict occurs, we can have conversations that naturally bring a high level of accountability, and through the conversation, we are able to restore connection and help the people involved in the situation move forward with mutual respect. We recognize the importance of conversation, and the intervention guide allows our teachers to consistently use opportunities for accountability in conjunction with important conversations. Through restorative practices, we are able to help students and staff see each other's perspective, build empathy, and discover that we have more in common than we may realize. I have had the privilege of facilitating many community-building circles and restorative conversations. I have been humbled by the ability of our young students to discuss difficult topics and find ways to understand one another and move past conflict. I have been part of conversations where students were able to express hurt that came from insensitive and inappropriate comments, impulsive actions, and misunderstandings. I have heard students say things such as, "It sounds like we have a lot in common." "I am so sorry, I did not know what that word really meant, and I need to apologize." I appreciate so much the opportunity to talk with you all tonight about something that has not only impacted our school community, but it has impacted me as an individual. I have seen kids and adults change because of conversations, and it gives me hope for the future. I know this is meaningful work because there is no more important work than investing in the lives of our students and those with whom we work. We can all learn and grow together, not just through academics, but through our connected community as well. Our learning about restorative practices has reminded us that people are valuable, and their behaviors do not identify them as a person. Together, we can help each other learn to be our very best. Thank you.
Okay, so, oh, sorry, does anyone have any questions? No, thank you, and I love this. I hadn't heard much about restorative practices, but I wrote down when you were talking about regulating emotion, you know, these are executive functioning skills that, I mean, I think it's good that our middle-school-age students are being, you know, exposed to this and that you're helping guide them through this, especially, a lot of times I think we look at middle school and kind of either think back on our own, or look at our kids going through it now, or we're afraid of it, or, huh, we got through it. And so, you know, to have more intention on the middle schooler themselves who is feeling that chaos and kind of, you know, helping them be better communicators and advocates for themselves and work with others, I think this is great, so.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And then, we'll take a short recess for anyone who wants to leave. Okay, so we do not have anyone on the public participation on agenda items portion, so we will move to the consent agenda. Have you all had time to review the, and any questions?
No questions, just one comment since most people are not going to see the details on what we're approving tonight. I just wanted to bring attention to one thing that's on here, which is the authorization to design the addition to Mashburn Elementary. That was a big part of our promised solution for the current redistricting that we just went through, so I just wanted to put it out there for the public that we're following through with that promise, and we are moving forward with designing the addition and accelerating that whole process.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second, okay. All in favor? Unanimous. And then, presentation and discussion items by Larry Hamel. Thank you, Larry.
Tonight, we're going to discuss the October 2023 financial statements. As always, we keep Goal Three in mind when we talk about the financial statements. So we started the month off with ninety, almost $91 million in cash, and we ended the month with about 98.6. Just a couple of things to point out, the healthcare increase are in these numbers for accounts payable and payroll. It's a little bit higher than they were this time last year. On the revenue side, we are at a 26.77% collection rate year-to-date. This time last year, we were at 24.43, so we're ahead about 2.3% on collections right now. And on the expense side, we're at a 33.2% expense year-to-date. This time last year, we're about 32.75, so we're about 5% behind on expenditures year-to-date. On the debt service cash analysis, as I've pointed out before, we do stick some money into our debt service new LGIP account to earn interest. Between those two accounts, we've got about $16.8 million. This time last year, we had 49, taking into account that we did drop the millage rate two years ago for debt service. And that's going to be made up with some money we reserved out in SPOS 5, as well as money we reserved out in your own fund. The SPOS 5 account is down to 26 million. We had 45. We're fastly spending that fund down. The SPOS 6 has 49 million in it. This time last year, we were at 29. We're down to $92 million. A lot of that has to do with debt service collections being less and SPOS 5 expenditures. So in total, with 92.6, last year we were at $122 million. Special revenue funds, we're exactly where we need to be in terms of the budget and what we spent. On the capital projects, currently, we're at $14 million. This time last year, we were at 28, so we are spending that money down based on the projects we currently have on hand with Midland. Excuse me, Midway. The school food service account is at $18 million, .4 million, 18.4 million. This time last year was 18 million, so it's pretty stable right now. The investment summary, Fund 100, we're at 9 million. Just to give you an idea how low this got this time of last year, we were only down to 30K in that fund, so it's doing pretty well. The Fund 200, we didn't have that account last year. We have 10 million of this year. Fund 353, as you can see, we're down to last $769. SPOS 4 should be completely spent by the time we clear that account out. SPOS 5 is down to $26 million, and of course, SPOS 6 is at 49. This time last year, we had $75 million compared to 95.8. SPOS 6 collections, just to point out a couple of things. As you can see, from May 22 collections down to January of this year, we were positive overall for every collections, and then starting in February, you notice it's negative .05, .05, and so on. In August, you notice there's a big spike of 15.83. Well, what happened was the state of Georgia had new software that they implemented, and they reran the analysis for several years and found about $700,000 they hadn't paid us, so they put a chunk of money in that particular month. If you pull that $700,000 out, that particular month is actually negative .08 compared to same time last year. And what I want to bring that out is, is if you take the average, starting with February to now, we are .053% collections compared to this time last year. So that kind of tells us that we definitely are seeing the slowdown in the economy, what's going on. Today, the inflation numbers came out, they were down to 3.2, so we're definitely seeing that's going down from what I can hear and what I'm reading in the papers. The Federal Reserve has pretty much stopped all future increases in the interest rates going forward. So that's a good sign. If it keeps the way it keeps going, I don't see why they won't start reducing interest rates maybe third or fourth quarter of next year. They'll need a couple quarters of flat growth or continue declines. The target for the Federal Reserve is always 2%, and we're still above that number. Elementary schools, we had $4.9 million this month. This time last year, we had about 4.8. The middle schools, we had 2.3. We had exactly 2.3 this time last year, and the high schools are at 6.2, we had 5.98. So they're pretty comparable where they were this time last year. And then, on the breakdown, if you look at the breakdown percentage-wise for high school and elementary and high, they're all the exact same as they were this time last year. And that's the financial statements for October 2023. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Next, we have our action items. So Mitch Young, we're up for the 2025-26 student calendar.
Hi, good evening. So last week, we presented to you the 25-26 school calendar with adjustments made based on our feedback. The only thing different about the calendar in front of you right now is that we have added, it doesn't change anything in terms of the calendar days or school days, but did want to highlight that we were able to get the elementary school principals and middle school principals to agree on their dates for open houses, so those are now on that calendar. And I know that doesn't change the makeup of the calendar, but it's very important for planning purposes for parents and principals alike. So without further recommendations or changes to this, I would recommend Dr. Bearden to submit this to the board for approval.
Recommend approval of the 25-26 student calendar.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
And then, very briefly, if I may, real quick while we're here, I just want to bring this calendar up to show you that last week you voted with the principals, that the high school principals presented to you a calendar adjustment to add the online learning week. That is now on the calendar. If you look down in May 6 through the 10th, and so we will, based on how you voted last week, we'll always have that week, but it may fluctuate from year to year. We have to wait until the AP testing calendar and the state testing calendar comes out, but just wanted to make a point of this publicly, that this is now up on our system website.
Couple of questions, just for the benefit of the public. So for the 25-26 calendar, the biggest, one of the biggest concerns we're hearing is we're not starting on a Thursday. Can you confirm that that's just a one-year thing and we intend to return to a Thursday?
Yeah, guaranteed that it's a one-year, we would have to pull out the calendar for '26-'27 to look at that. I mean, I will definitely look into that and can report that back to you.
But the intent is to return.
Oh, the intention, absolutely. I would say that loud and clear. The intention will always be to try to start it on a Thursday. The only factors that would limit that is how the natural calendar lines up, and we've got to get those 178 school days in. And again, unless we change our bookends, we never want to start them in the month of July, we will always want to try to start them in August, and that's really what captured us on this last calendar. But yes, Mr. Vaudis, we will always strive, we're going to strive to try to get back to that in any way that we can.
And then, on the virtual week for high schools, just for the benefit of the public, can you confirm that we're still offering transportation, we're still offering meals, kids can come in if they want to?
And again, just a reminder, this is high school only, but even at high school, all of our special needs self-contained classes will operate as normal. That will not be an online learning week for them, but for the rest, the students' transportation will continue to run, and if parents need for kids to go to school, they can. Now, they may not be with their classroom teacher because of all the proctoring and all the things going on, but they'll have a safe place to go, and they'll have technology available, they can do their online learning while at the school.
And food services will be available for them as well, right?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Legislative priorities with Jennifer Caracholo.
Good evening. Hi. Last week, I presented to you the proposed legislative priorities. Oh, these are the last ones from last week, sorry. You do see in the E-Board, I added in the impact statement, impact fees. So we have school safety, student transportation, professional learning, and then I added in impact fees. So at this time, I would ask the superintendent to please recommend approval of the 23-24 legislative priorities.
I will, and just so for the public knows, we meet with the legislative delegation normally the first week in December to go over these priorities. So with that, I'd recommend approval of the legislative priorities for the 2024 session.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, next is establishing the 2024 board meeting dates. I think you'll have a copy of that in front of you. So.
I'll just add, if you don't mind, and again, this is for the public, for work sessions starting in calendar year '24, the board has decided to start those at 5:00 PM instead of 4:00 PM in order that more people could hopefully attend, so that's the one major change. Other than that, the days of the week of the board meetings will remain the same, but work sessions will be at 5:00 PM instead of 4:00 PM, and I recommend approval of the 2024 board meeting calendar.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
All good.
And does anyone have any points of information? No? Okay, short recess if anyone needs it. You can leave now. Okay, then we will move on to public participation on non-agenda items, and first, we have Jer Kershaw.
Thank you, my name is Jer Kershaw. On October 7th, Hamas terrorists executed the most barbaric and vicious attack against Jews since the Holocaust. Taking advantage of the Jewish Sabbath, they rampaged through border towns, killing, raping, mutilating, and kidnapping innocent civilians, including a three-year-old American child whose parents were murdered in the attack. This may seem impossibly distant and completely unrelated to matters of education, but sadly, it's closer than we think. Across our country, at prestigious universities everywhere, we have seen students offer comfort, support, and sympathy, not to the Jews who were savaged by the barbarians, but to the barbarians of Hamas who now use human shields in Gaza to protect themselves from the righteous punishment they deserve. These students, steeped in the most twisted image of diversity, inclusion, and equity you can imagine, wave banners like "Queers for a Free Palestine," even though the Hamas agents they're supporting believe their god, Allah, demands they kill homosexuals. They have been so thoroughly brainwashed by the ideas of white fragility and Black Lives Matter and critical race theory that they have decided, despite the identical skin color of Jews and Arabs, that one of them is white, one of them is black, and therefore, we know who is wrong and who is right. This systemic racism against white people in our country is shameful, and a very recent example illustrates this perfectly. You likely haven't heard of Jonathan Lewis. He was 17 years old and died this past November 8th in Las Vegas. His death was due to being lynched on November 1st by 15 violent racists. Had his race been different, or the race of his attackers been different, you might have heard of him, but he was white, and his murderers were black. There was a time, long ago, in this country's history, when a mob of white men killing a black man was just another day that ended in Y. As the South became more and more Republican, it became less and less racist, and thank God, those days are far behind us. But today, that same casual race hatred is becoming more and more prevalent, even though the colors have been swapped. In our diversity, inclusion, and equity programs in Forsyth County, we must remain vigilant against those who would use it to encourage hatred and division. We must actively proclaim that white heterosexual male students are just as diverse as black, homosexual, non-binary, two-spirit transgender students. We must work to include young Christian women just as much as we work to include young Muslim men. We must be ever wary of the casual hatred generated by victimhood mentality. We've done a fairly good job in Forsyth County, avoiding the toxic diversity, inclusion, and equity propaganda that has infected many of our higher education institutions, and I sincerely thank the board for that. I would humbly ask the board to continue this good work so that we do not open our community to the hate and violence we now see that comes from a woke mindset. And so on that note, thank you very much for your time, and again, I'd love to have lunch with anyone who disagrees with me.
Thank you, and next, we have Patricia Wall.
Thank you. Last month, a speaker decided to school us in what, in his opinion, constitutes a groomer, a word that he seems to be obsessed with on more than one occasion. And why is he so fixated on sexuality and gender identity of our students? Along with some of my friends, I decided to flip that conversation into a more positive and informative vibe. If you respect the right of others to raise their children the way they choose, you may be a good person. If you listen to hear and not to interject, you may be a good person. If you don't deny someone's history because it is not the way you see it, you may be a good person. If you know the difference between subject matter that is relevant to teenagers and porn, you may be an intelligent person. If you know that sex is not the same as porn, you may be an intelligent person. If you know that middle and high school students with a smartphone have more access to actual visual pornography than any reading materials in our media centers or classrooms, you may be an intelligent person. Parents need to be more aware of their child's digital activity. If you know that the existence of LGBTQ people is not a threat to students, nor a form of grooming students, you may be a good person. If you know that gender identity and sexual orientation are not the same, you may be an intelligent person. If you know that transgender identity, based on the research, it has a biological rather than psychological underpinnings, you may be an intelligent person. If you already know that zero books have harmed a child, let alone a teenager, who has access to books with content that they are already knowledgeable about, you may be a good person. In other words, reading a book with a gay character is not going to make your child gay, just as reading a book about Albert Einstein is not going to subtly make them smart. If you understand that some children in this district have two mommies or two daddies, and that those families are just as legitimate as traditional families and deserve to see themselves in picture books and literature, you may be a good person. They do, in fact... They do, in fact, comprise the all in the system's vision and mission statements. If you can be the one who stops a bully, you may be a good person. If you can see the human being beyond the piercings, vibrant hair colors, or tattoos, you may be a good person. If you accept others for who they are and celebrate their differences, you may be a good person. So if you cannot find it within yourself to embrace diversity, to be inclusive, compassionate, empathetic, and kind, then maybe you're not a good person.
Thank you, and that is it on our public participation. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Have a good Thanksgiving.